The mission statement for the Lake Mills area school district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted on the LMSD web site and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
All right, then we will call this meeting to order. I will invite all that are able to please join and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will ask for a roll call vote for attendance.
Brianna Besleck?
Here.
Ken Imers?
Here.
Andrea Graham?
Here.
Abby Hale?
Here.
Amy Litcher?
Here. All right, are there any revisions to the agenda?
I'll move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Besleck?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, we will move now on to our first board report.
Hi, it's, um, we have Dr. Rob Demuse, the Vice President of Research for School Perceptions online with us. He's going to go through the data that we received from both our spring staff surveys and our parent surveys. So, um, gotten the results already in, um, spring, but this was the first opportunity he was able to get in front of the board. Um, our administrators have looked at this data and after tonight's meeting, then we'll be sending out both, um, the results to families and staff. So, all right, Rob, welcome.
Well, thank you so much, and I appreciate your flexibility in allowing me to be virtual. I just returned from a funeral, so this is, uh, while not great, it is, uh, convenient. Oh, my god, my sharing is not, I think I gotta send a request to share my screen. There we go, thank you. Okay, so, like you heard Tanya say, um, I got a summary of your staff and parent reports here. Um, I got a lot of good data for you, which is, which is exciting and good news right off the bat. Um, and bear in mind that you do have a couple of staff surveys under your belt, but this is, uh, your number one for parents, so you will see some longitudinal data for your staff, but not for your parents. Uh, a year from now, certainly, we'll be able to fill up more of those columns, uh, but I just wanted you to be aware of that if the data looks a little bit different when we change gears there, that's why.
Rob, you're like a little quiet all of a sudden. You were loud when you first started.
Uh, like when I started sharing my screen, it's weird.
Yeah, as soon as you shared your screen, it cut out.
Um, I could talk loud.
All right.
Is that any, is that any better?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, um, let me see. So, your data or your surveys were finished up in about mid-spring. Um, we boiled the data down into this report, not all slides, much like your community survey from a couple of years ago, um, not all of these will be treated the same. Um, so when we change gears, or, um, if we have, uh, if we're going into a different section of your survey, if we're switching scales, we're gonna pop a blue slide up on the screen, let you know where we're heading. Uh, who took your survey, that will be in yellow, and some intro slides, we'll spend most of our time on green, the results and analysis, and certainly along the way, uh, interrupt me if you have any questions, otherwise we'll set aside some time at the end on a gray slide, too. Um, hopefully our name doesn't look too unfamiliar to you, um, we've done a whole slew of surveys for Lake Mills over the years, whether it be pre-referendum or long-term planning, um, staff surveys, parent surveys, board surveys, so hopefully our name doesn't sound too unfamiliar. But as you heard Tanya say, my name is Rob and I'm the VP of Research at School Perceptions, and I'll take you through the summary of your data this evening. Let's start with our staff hat on. So for your staff, your deadline was May 7th, you had 197 respondents, which is actually above average, so 60 to 75% is average percentage of what I would want on any given district in a, in a staff survey, and you're a little bit above that. Um, not only is that good, but it, it's a little bit abnormal in a good way for, for districts who have done these surveys multiple times. Um, it's not common to see the response rate go up over time, but what's good news here is that obviously you're being very clear on how you're using the data. Um, so if you're a staff member, you must look at this and say, boy, I really wanna get my voice in, because they're obviously looking at this data, they're listening to the data, and they're doing something about it. Uh, so it's good that you're above average here, and it's good that your, your participation rate is actually getting stronger, so really good news there, it shows your staff that you care about the data you collect. Um, and those first pieces of the data, then, for your staff, we're gonna begin with a kind of a 30,000-foot view of your indexes. So key questions will fill, uh, feed these indexes. You use them, um, to provide you a snapshot as educational leaders of how your district is doing. Um, so we're gonna dig deeper with some of these questions that feed the indexes in just a moment, but it is a good snapshot, a good overview. Uh, and even though this maybe wasn't the original intention we had for them, um, we've actually seen districts use these as pillars of their strategic plan as they've built them over the years. Um, so if you want a pre or preset quantifiable way to measure your progress over time, we've seen districts use these for these, for that purpose as well. But all that being said, um, you're on a one to five scale. Can't get better than a five, can't get worse than a one, which means the middle of that one to five scale is 3.00. So when I eyeball this data for the very first time, regardless of whether it's staff, parents, students, whatever, when I eyeball it for the first time, I look and see, are you above or below three? Cause that's the side of the fence that you really wanna be on, you wanna be leaning towards agreement on any given one of these indexes and questions. So let's dig into your staff. First, I'm gonna look at the current score for each one of these indexes. These indexes being, one, academics, we are effective in teaching and supporting our students. Two, engagement, I like working at this school because I'm valued, I'm heard, and I can contribute. Three, I have the support I need to help educate our students and work as a team. And then for staff, they have that bidirectional lens, how are the kiddos in my room doing? But then also how we as a staff doing? So for students, are they accepted, respected, and supported at school? And then ditto for staff. So when I just look down your current score column, every one of your scores are above three, which means in aggregate, your staff are leaning towards agreement that all of these statements below these index titles are true. Second piece of good news is that you are doing better this year than you were 365 days ago. You're up nearly 3% in your academic measurement. So not only do staff feel effective in teaching, so they're, they feel more supported and more supportive of the students in their room, and that measure of rigor, you're up nearly 3% there. You're up a little over 1% in staff feeling engaged. You're up about 1% in the nature of which staff feel supported. You're up over 2% in whether students are accepted, respected, and supported at school. And you're up by 1% on the nose in terms of how staff are doing, so up across the board.
Rob?
That's the most, yeah.
Question for you, uh, when I looked at these numbers, I was wondering, like polls, you know, have a plus or minus, uh, variation. What would you say is a spread that's meaningful?
Um, are you thinking like margin of error?
What'd you say?
Margin of error.
Yeah, margin of error, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, margin of error, or just accuracy, in other words, what, if it, if a score goes up by, uh, .05, or?
Yeah.
You know?
Doing some math on my other screen. So you're looking at a margin of error of about 6% or so, um, but not necessarily on this number here. The margin of error would apply, ooh, do I have it in here? Uh, I don't. The margin of error would apply to the percentage of staff that agree or strongly agree with any particular item when you're planning to extrapolate to the entire staff, but you already have most of the staff. There's not a lot of extrapolation that that margin of error needs to worry about. Um, so actually, the margin of error, you can't really apply to any of the percentages that are in here.
Okay, thank you.
Because I didn't put in the percentages. These, this is just a simple formula of where are you now minus where you were before divided by where you were before. Uh, now, in terms of, like, what is a good increase, that I can answer a little bit differently. Um, and I would say that when districts say, boy, I really wanna improve, how, you know, what's a good number to improve by? Usually I say that, uh, if you were gonna move up 5%, that's a bar that's pretty high to clear, especially for a staff your size. Now, we're, when we're working in the south shores of the world, they have 19 staff. They got about 120 kids, so they can move up by, you know, 10% because one staff member changed their mind. For you, I would say that anything that is both, you know, between about 2 to 4% is pretty hefty growth, cause you gotta change a lot of minds over the course of 178 respondents to move by 3% in any given year. So 5% is almost unattainable. I bet maybe in terms of growth, if I type double digits twice a year, I'd maybe be surprised.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you bet. Um, that, by the way, and I'm glad that question came up, cause now you're looking at this column here, this is arguably the most important column that, that you can have in this report. Um, yes, you wanna beat the competition, you wanna beat out who else is in your comparison pool, but the number one thing is, are we doing better than we were last year? Have we taken a step forward? And the answer is across the board, yes, you have. Now, that being said, we can also contextualize this data and say, well, in other K-12 school districts that have similar demographics, um, that have similar enrollments, similar staff to student ratios, is this kind of a normal number? Are we doing better, are we doing worse than other districts that look like us? Um, the pool, by the way, if you're curious, the pool on any given index or question, some districts change their surveys a little bit, but in any given index or pool, you're looking at a comparison group of about 120 to 140. So, on four of these, you are outperforming your comparison. You're doing better than your comparison pool in the academics measure, you're doing better in the engagement measure, you're doing better in the student experience, and you're doing better in the staff experience. The only one where you're a little bit behind to the tune of nine hundredths of a point is the support by which staff feel, but you're moving in the right direction. And you know, that, the, the number that districts aim for, that's very much a value judgment, and it's not always normal. Some districts will say, I really wanna achieve this score every single year, and, and they make a goal based on this column. Other districts will say, nope, we wanna improve by X percent every year, and they'll make that column the, the most important. Other districts will say, well, you know what, I'm not so concerned about what our score is, I just wanna be better than everybody else, and they want this number here to be better than this number over here in the comparison. So how you wanna deem what effectiveness is, how you wanna deem whether you're going in the right direction, very much is a value judgment, but I think the percent change is by far the most important, cause that tells you, are we better than we were last year? Yes or no? Let's look at some of the questions that feed those indices, then. So same scale, by the way, on any given one of these, can't be better than a five, can't be worse than a one, so I really wanna look, um, from a broad perspective, are you above or below three on any given item? Let's begin with the scores that earn the highest metrics from your staff. At a, well, two, two, well, three scores, rather, that are very high, well above four, so you're kind of in the strongly agree range. I have healthy working relationships with my coworkers, 4.39. Our staff does a good job of educating our students at a score of 4.32, followed closely behind by I feel safe at work, 4.30. Two scores, then, that are very close, separated by one, one hundredth of a point, my school is clean and well-kept, is 4.23, followed closely behind by our school has a process to ensure every student has a connection with at least one adult in school, 4.22. Now, over the years, Tanya has, has heard me explain this a, a couple of times in different ways to different audiences, but I would say that not all, well, I would say all questions in our staff survey are valuable, but some are a little bit more valuable than others. And this is some research that's kinda hot off the presses for us. Um, but one of the things that we do is we say, well, uh, there's a, there's a culminating question that I'll show you in just a moment, and it's kind of our nut promoter-like question. It says, on a scale of zero to 10, how likely are you to recommend our district to a friend or family member? That question is a pretty good indicator of whether you're gonna experience a great deal of turnover. Our staff always coming and going, do we have a difficult time, um, attracting or retaining staff? That question that I'll get to in a second is a pretty good indicator of that. The questions that determine whether somebody will recommend your district, some questions matter more than others. There are three that matter a lot. Those three that matter the most are your three items that are getting the highest scores. In other words, a different way to say that, if staff don't feel like they're getting along with one another, if staff don't feel like they're effective in their jobs, and if staff don't feel safe at work, you will never make progress in anything else. You, you have to kinda clear her, those hurdles first before you wanna make improvements on discipline, or pay, or inputs, or anything else that's in the survey. If you wanna improve, you have to have these three things in place, and the good news for Lake Mills is that you have them in place. And not only are they in place, you've cleared that hurdle, they're your three highest-scoring items. So this is setting you, this is setting yourself up really well for success to make progress in some of the other areas in your survey where you wanna make progress. And I'm not saying that there aren't other pieces of your survey where your staff are telling you they wanna help, but what I'm saying is you set yourself up nicely to make progress in those areas because you've cleared these hurdles. I get concerned when staff don't feel safe at work, I get really concerned if staff aren't getting along with one another, because those are foundational aspects that you gotta have in place. So, in other words, again, what you have to have in place, you have in place to make progress in other things, and that's hu, two huge thumbs up. That being said, a list is a list, so if we talk about what's at the top, something's gotta be at the bottom. These are your items where your staff are telling you they want some help. Couple notes, though. Social-emotional needs, and whether they're being met, and the two discipline scores, whether discipline practices are consistent, and whether the discipline practices and policies are effective, they will move in tandem. They're very highly correlated with one another. Couple thoughts about these to contextualize these. I can't tell you the last time I made a staff report and didn't have those three questions be on the bottom. That is not a Lake Mills thing. It doesn't mean that your staff doesn't want help there, but it means that every district with whom we work is struggling with the exact same things that you are, which is discipline and social-emotional needs. And I bet throughout a date, let's say March 14th, 2020, I bet that since that date, I could make a template and have those three items be at the bottom. Everybody is in the same boat there, struggling. So, again, I don't wanna minimize the point that your staff are telling you they wanna help, but I am saying that you are like everybody else in terms of your staff asking for help in that area. Now, what I will say, which is good, is that normally, discipline is at the bottom, but normally it's not above three. So at least, even though it's towards the bottom, your staff in aggregate are still leaning towards agreement that these policies and practices are consistent and effective, but they do say they want a little help there. The one and only one item that is below three is whether the pay practices are fair. That said, I'm not surprised, that, that one is also at the bottom if and when discipline and social-emotional needs are at the bottom. Because staff are, they wanna be paid more, any staff, it's not Lake Mills-specific, any staff member wants to be paid more if their job is more difficult, and discipline issues make the job more difficult. So, when, when I have to overcome other things in my job, pay is one of those things that can, that can make progress in overcoming those things, but on the next line, one of the items from your staff survey, year over year, that you're making the most progress on are pay practices being fair. So yes, it's below three, yes, in aggregate, your staff are leaning towards disagreement, but you made substantial progress year over year in terms of where you were, you know, with your spring 2024 data. Now, going back to that initial question, I would say the magnitude of change that you have on some of these, not only is it high, but it's high for a district your size. It's not common to see year-over-year growth above 5% for a district your size. Again, you, you have to make progress over nearly 180 staff members who took your survey, and it's just, you have to make a lot of progress to see growth to this magnitude. So again, I don't wanna minimize pay practices, it's, oops, it's one of your lower-scoring items, but you made big progress year over year. Some of those other items where you made big progress, workload, up almost 9%. Every student having a connection with at least one adult at school, I would say that's a huge step forward, not only is it one of your highest-scoring items, as I back up a few slides, but you're actually making progress on things that are already going well. So that's, you know, that's like your A becoming an A+. Your A is getting even higher, which is not an easy thing to do. So even some of your higher-scoring items are getting even higher. You have more, um, satisfaction from your staff in terms of whether the district is heading in the right direction. Social-emotional needs, another one of those items that, yes, it's near the bottom, but huge improvement over year over year, and then finally that one with the pay practices. Few other notes on staff, um, down by just a hair, so here we're talking like hundredths of a point difference, very small decline in, um, access to technology support, very small decline in healthy working relationships. Again, you're scoring so highly there that it's really not a big concern for me there. I mean, again, we're talking about hundredths of a point of a difference. Um, a difference or decline of about a percentage point and a half in staff having training and support to work with students from different backgrounds, decline by about 2%, just a little over, in I have the materials and supplies, I need to do my job well, and then that decline by just under 3%, I have opportunities for training or professional development to help improve my work. I'm gonna go in a slightly different direction with communication with staff in just a moment, but any questions about what's at the bottom, what's at the top, or where you made the most progress year over year for your staff?
Do you have specific comments where you could see, like for the technology one, for example, like, did people then in the comments list, like, I need more of this or that? Like, I'm just wondering about specific things that we might need, just in those lowest areas of growth, like, what are people commenting that they need?
Ooh. Yeah, good question. I don't remember off the, I know that Lake Mills has those, and, um, but I don't remember off the top of my head whether technology was one of those items in there. Uh, if it is, it would be a theme in there, I just can't remember off the top of my head whether.
In the summaries that you provided, you mean? Okay.
I was gonna say, Rob, can I ask another question to kinda piggyback off of that?
Please, go.
Um, I believe it was our last survey set, we were able to kind of log in and get access to the information, not who did said what, but just overall, general, and then here was a comment, no name, here was a comment. We did not have access to that this time, is that correct?
Correct. I didn't, I didn't give anyone access to the comments this time.
If, just to know, if we have access, then it's a possible that the public can, just, just to know, if we want that as a board, then it's a possible public, like, the public can see that, then? Like, if, as a records request, if they can just know that if we want to see the specific comments, then a public could make the, uh, specific requests, it, it could make a, uh, records request to see those.
It's, yeah, it just becomes a public record, so.
So, just, just a note to do that, if you want that.
We as in the board, or our district as a whole? Like, if those comments? If the, if he releases those comments to our district, they are subject to open's record, record request, correct? That's what you're saying? Yep, okay.
But that wasn't an issue before, or it just wasn't brought up?
Nope, that's always been true.
So that's, that's a discussion that we can have as a board, maybe at, at another time, or, but, so if, if that, if that's a decision of the board, absolutely.
Towards, um, one person or another, or against school board members, or anything like that, I mean, once those comments are made, you know, do you just put them out there publicly? Um, or, you know, how, I guess, how have districts reacted to that?
Um, I would say that when there's interest in having comments, probably 98% of the time, districts that I work with will make, will, will do that via the thematic analyses. And it's not because they don't wanna read through the comments or make time to do so, but for all the reasons that you already expressed, um, if you have access to every single one of those, and then the public has them, usually the next year, response rates crater, cause people say, boy, somebody's gonna find out who I am, even if he can't. The, the perception is there that I'm not gonna tell you how I feel, because now this is blasted everywhere, and, you know, to heck with your survey, I'm not gonna do it anymore. Um, now, it doesn't mean that, you know, for your prerogative as a board member, whether districts do or don't, but I would say very, very few boards have access to all of the comments. Um, one way that we've seen districts do that in the past is boards that are very enthusiastic about reading every one, one of the comments. Um, a superintendent will often treat it like a rare book in their office. You can't check it out, you can't take it home, but it stays, you know, under lock and key, under the, um, in a, in a file cabinet in the superintendent's office, by nature of how sensitive those comments are. Um, that triggered one other thing in my head, um... Uh, I don't know, oh, and I think, Tanya, you're right, it's, um, by, it doesn't matter if it's a community survey, a staff survey, a parent survey, uh, the comments will always skew towards negative. And, you know, excuse the bad analogy here, but I, I have US Cellular, I never called the US Cellular and said, boy, you're really doing a good job, you know, like, I really appreciate the, I only call them if it's, if my service is terrible. And it's not unlike that in your comments here as well. Um, you're mostly gonna get negative comments in your comment sections. It doesn't mean you don't wanna know why, especially for items that declined, it can be very helpful, but we've tried to already capture maybe some of those why moments in the thematic analysis that we've already sent.
I think it's a different, um, scenario to know that you've read some of the comments as opposed to no one in our school district reading the comments. It concerns me if people are answering a survey, sharing their feedback, and then no one in our, in-house is seeing them, so I think that's, that kinda changes my perspective a little bit. I'm, we want someone to see the comment, so that if there's a glaring issue, it can be addressed.
And they were actually probably the most positive comments I've ever read out of any of the school perception surveys I've done. They were, I mean, they were all really positive, but I, I would say, like Rob stated, you can hear people's voice in the comments, I mean, it's not always hard to figure out, um, where things are coming from, but I think it's making sure that if you do see a, a trend in the comments, especially if it's toward a particular person, that, um, I try to address that probably as discreetly as possible and, um, move that way, but I would say, you know, this time around, there really wasn't much of that, there were probably a little bit more on the positive end of things.
So can I just clarify, then, for those districts that print it and have it under lock and key, there's no difference than allowing access to your board online, it would still be subject to public record?
Technically, yes.
Uh, yeah, and it, it mainly comes down to disaggregation features, so if you're online, in theory, you could say, show me pair of professionals at this school who have more than 10 years of experience, you know, and you can dig pretty deep into those comments, whereas, you know, if it comes in a spreadsheet, the, you know, obviously you can't dynamically disaggregate, which is where some of that discomfort lies.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Okay, uh, let's see, just a couple other notes about staff, then, so communications, um, school communications are blank, um, so easy to understand, you're up a little over 2 and 1/2% with one, or, uh, compared to one year ago. Exact same score in whether school commu, communications are informative, and then decline by a hundredth of a point, so basically I'd call that steady, in whether school communications are timely. Um, you're doing better in terms of the understanding ease compared to other districts. Um, you're basically, then, you're kinda like everybody else in terms of whether they're informative or timely. Um, looking over at the far-right column, you're 2.72, comparison is 2.73, and whether they're timely, you're at a 2.66, comparison is 2.69. So pretty steady, um, but it sounds like, uh, whatever you're putting out is just more easily digestible for staff than it was one year ago from today. This one, you actually won't see longitudinal data, um, because we peeled this apart in, in it to get you a little bit more granular data, so we said, overall, how would you rate communications specifically from the district office? Um, about 60% said good, and about 1 in 5 said great, so looking, you're at about 80% of your staff that are saying district office communications, um, are either good or great. And if you look from the building level, you're looking at about 84%, so pretty similar data. And now, again, we, we peeled this apart, um, from last year, uh, I think last year overall, we just said something like, you know, oh... overall, how would you rate communications from us or something to that effect? Uh, but I, I know that Tanya was, uh, enthusiastic about making sure that these went up. So now next year, we can say, well, as we make progress, are we making progress from the district, from the building levels? You know, what's going up, what's going down, and kind of peeling those onions of the layer back a little bit. So no longitudinal data here, simply because we, we asked this question slightly differently than we did last year. Uh, then, which is probably no less important, what topics are you interested in learning more about? Um, I'm glad that this one was added. Um, we were working with a district fairly recently who, um, the superintendent was shipping out communications all the time. You know, he said, God, I feel like two thirds of my job is just writing up communications. And his communication scores were atrocious. And he was like, I don't know what to do. Like this is all, well, as it turns out, he was writing a lot of communications, but they weren't what people wanted to read about, you know? They weren't interesting to people, they weren't easy to understand. It wasn't what people wanted to learn about. So not only do you have to put communications out at the right time through the right medium, but to get it to eyeballs, we gotta make sure that we're talking about the right things. So for your staff, as you think about catering the messages to staff, they really want to know about achievements at school, be it achievements among staff members, be it achievements among students, what's really going well. Your staff are interested in learning about that. Uh, they're interested in how you perform compared to other districts that look like you. And then I would say kind of rounding out that first tier, um, the money issue, school finance and budget, and then school safety and security. Um, it doesn't mean that it's not valuable to staff, but I guess where it catches a few fewer eyeballs are extracurricular offerings and kind of those events and things, um, that are going on at school. Um, you already got a lot of facility work going on. I'm sure that there's, you know, things going on around school right this second. Um, so just a little bit less interest in, in facility improvement plans as well. Finally then, for your staff, um, I mentioned this earlier on, the overall satisfaction question and which questions will matter most in moving the needle on this. Um, a couple of ways to read this. So first, simply what does the question say? On a scale of zero to ten, how likely are you to recommend the district as a place of employment? So three, maybe four ways to look at this. Um, first, I just eyeball it. All right, do you have longer bars up top than you do in the bottom? And the answer is resoundingly yes. You don't have, you don't have anybody that's giving you a zero or a one. You have a lot more greens than you do those scary reds and oranges at the bottom. So just eyeballing it, you're in really good shape here. Second way to eyeball this, or second way to look at it rather, is five's a neutral point. Ten's a perfect score, zero's the worst score. You're well above the neutral point at a score of seven point seven seven. So staff are much more likely in aggregate to recommend you than they are not to. That's a second way to look at it. Third way of looking at it is, are you better than where you were last year? And the answer is yes. You're up over five percent from your staff. You went from seven point three eight to seven point seven seven. Fourth way to look at this is you compared to others that look like you, and you blew them out of the water. A normal score for a district like you would be seven point zero eight, and again, you're at a seven point seven seven. So your staff are much more likely to recommend you than staff in other districts that look like you. The fifth, I think I'm on five, fifth way to look at this is by summing up your eights, your nines, and your tens. So when I do that, I shouldn't do this on the fly. So nineteen and sixteen is thirty-five, plus twenty-seven, I'm at sixty-two percent. That matters because the research behind this question suggests that anybody that's an eight, a nine, or a ten will act as an ambassador on your behalf. In other words, they're the conversation strikers, they're the conversation starters. They will be the ones that, you know, if, if they're at a game, they will strike up a conversation with the person behind them at the concession stand, talking about the cool things that are happening in Lake Mills. If they're at a family reunion, they will talk about the cool things that are happening in Lake Mills. And again, you have almost two thirds of your staff that are in that bucket. They're your conversation strikers. Um, this is a bit more anecdotal, but, you know, being north of sixty percent as ambassadors is one of those things where it's, again, it's not normal in a good way. Um, you know, if you're reaching majority, I usually get pretty excited about that, and you're well north of majority there. Um, so that tells me that Tanya doesn't have to do that work, you don't have to do that work, administrators don't have to do that work. Staff are doing that work on your behalf, sharing the good things that are happening. Um, once you add in the other twenty-five percent that have a positive association with what you're doing, you're up north, you know, close to nine and ten of your staff have a positive association with what's going on in the district. Um, so, um, you're in really good shape here related to your staff. Uh, we're gonna switch to parents, a little less data there, again, because staff have year over year data, parents do not. Uh, but any other things nagging at you regarding to your staff data as I take a sip of water here?
I think we're good.
Okay, then put that parent hat on. Um, your survey deadline for parents, April twenty-third, two hundred and seventy-two respondents, and you hit the nail on the head in terms of average. If before we started, you said, what's the average parent response rate? I would have told you thirty-three percent. You're right at thirty-three percent. So nothing to write home about here. And we'll start with those indexes. Same idea here. The indexes are different for parents, but same idea. Um, they're provided, designed to provide you with a snapshot. Key questions throughout the survey feed these indexes. Worst one, best five, middle is three. Well, more data for you in the middle. So here I can show you how you're doing. And then I can show you how you stack up against your comparisons. But before we do so, what are those indices for your parents? Informed, I am kept up to date on my child's progress and what's happening at school. I am welcome, respected, and part of the school community. My child's school is effective in helping them learn, develop, and succeed. My child feels safe and supported at school. And my family is accepted, respected, and supported at school. So few ways to just look at this from that thirty thousand foot view. Um, first, you're above three in all of these, and you're well north of three on a couple of these. It is not normal to have index scores be above four, because remember, you're, you're, you're taking scores from various questions and pooling them together to create these, which means if you're gonna be above four, you gotta be well north of four on a couple of these questions that feed these to get an index score that's above four. And I'll show you what some of those questions are in just a moment. Um, so well north of three, and as you compare this column to your far right-hand column, you're doing better on all of these indexes compared to other districts that look like you. So really good data as you set the bar for next year here. Um, again, you know, next year, your most important column will probably be, are we continuing to make progress? But for right now, contextualizing this data, you are doing better than other districts that look like you. What about some of those items that feed those indexes? Sound like a bit of a broken record here, but five being the best, one being the worst, three being the middle. Five items with the highest scores. First one, school facilities are clean and well kept. That is the highest item from your parents, followed closely behind by, I feel welcome in my child's school, with scores respectively at four point two eight and four point two six. Parents feel like school staff treat my child with dignity and respect. You're well above four there at a score of four point two zero. And then rounding out your top five highest items at a scores of four point one six and four point one two, my child feels safe at school. And if my child breaks a rule at school, they are treated fairly. Now, much like for your staff, um, I like to think that all questions are valuable, but some are a bit more valuable than others. The number one thing, burn away. That will affect whether a parent is willing to recommend you, second from the bottom. My child feels safe at school. This is by far the most important question in the parent survey, and by far the most important predictor on whether a parent is willing to recommend you. So much like for your staff, I get excited when I see certain questions in your top five, and this is in your top five. Um, the other one, and I don't know if I should be surprised by this or not, to be honest, but another one that really, really matters for parents, our school facilities are clean and well kept. I think, you know, just kind of eyeballing a school when I drive by, when I'm in the school, my perception on how it looks, for better or worse, as a parent, drives how I feel about the school in general. You know, if it looks messy, then I have this impression that it's run messy. If it looks dirty, I have this impression that things aren't going well. Um, and again, I don't know if I should be surprised by that or not, you know, people, people make perceptions on maybe things that they shouldn't have perceptions on. But regardless, school facilities are clean and well kept will matter a great deal on whether a parent is gonna recommend you, and that is the number one highest scoring item from your parents. So much like for your staff, some of those items that are really important, those hurdles to clear, you cleared them here with your parents. Um, much like what I said for staff, though, when you make a list, something's gotta be at the top, something's gotta be at the bottom. What's interesting though is that, I guess I would say these are your lowest scores in heavy air quotes. Your lowest scores are not low scores. There are districts we work with that would love to have a three eight be some of their highest scoring items. Now for you, it's at the bottom. I, I debated what to call this graph, because again, they're your lowest scores, but they are not low scores. You have three items that are above three point eight, but kind of in that range, the district is heading in the right direction. The school provides opportunities for parental involvement. I have opportunities to provide feedback to the school and teachers, and I am updated on how my child is doing at school. The one then that's a little bit towards the bottom, I am satisfied with our school's efforts to address bullying. Out of any score from your parents, that is the lowest at a score of three point four five. But again, in aggregate, your parents are still agreeing that they're satisfied with those efforts. It just happens to be the lowest among all the items. Uh, again, don't have year over year, because this is year numero uno for your parents, so I'm gonna skip right to communications. Before I do so though, um, and change scales on you a little bit, any questions about highest or lowest for your parents?
Rob, I was just gonna ask, I noticed in your index analysis and both parent and staff, right, that the three is kind of thrown out. Do you have a statistics for each, I guess, on how many you had to throw out? I mean, does it drop our numbers drastically for certain areas because a lot of people felt eh, right?
Uh, I think I need that one more time, I'm sorry.
So if you put a three, I'm, I'm reading this as the three wasn't included in these calculations. You kind of threw that score out. Do you have a calculation of how many threes there were amongst the, um, a two hundred and seventy-two parent responses?
Good question. And I, um, should let me go here. So we actually don't ask a three. There is no three. We really try to force people to think about whether they agree or disagree with any specific item. And we've gone back and forth on this a lot as a company. The psychological research, psychological research suggests that when you, when you give people the opportunity to, to say neutral, yes, there are times where I do indeed feel nu- fear, you feel neutrally, but people get used to it and then they just click it. And people actually give a lot more cognitive attention to surveys that don't include a neutral. So we don't, we actually don't throw out the threes. There just is no three in the survey. It's only five, four, two, and one. These are the only options that are given to me. The only items that we don't include are if people say, I don't know, or it doesn't apply, it's actually given a weight of zero. And we don't want a zero to artificially deflate your, your, your scores, because that would be unfair, because we're basically saying, we'd be taking into account people who say this doesn't apply to me. So we only take into account people that have an opinion. But for those that have an opinion, this is their scale, um, one, two, four, five, strongly disagree to strongly agree. So mathematically, I can get to a three, even though three is not given to me as an option in the survey. So we don't throw any data out.
So then, uh, am I understanding correctly that they could say, I don't know if my child feels welcome in the school?
Yes, that's correct. So in that particular case, if they don't know, then we remove them.
So then I guess what would be the percentage of those people?
Oh, okay. Yeah, that I can tell you. Um, for a parent survey. Thinking, see, aggregate district data. Fortunately for your parents, that's typically pretty low, but let me actually answer your question directly and give you a percentage. Um, so on this, I just had this up on my other screen. Like my child feels safe at school, only two parents said they didn't know, um, less than a percent of respondents. Um, school facilities are clean and well kept, three parents said that. So you're looking at, boy, most days my child enjoys going to school, one parent out of the three hundred and thirty-three there, so pretty, like a handful maybe on any item that parents said they don't know, less than a percentage.
Yeah, that's really helpful to know. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Oh, let's see. Any other questions about the highest and lowest before I take you to parent communication preferences?
Nope.
Okay, then let's go there. Um, overall, how would you rate communications from school? There are eighty-three percent of parents that are telling you, you're doing a great or a good job. Here we're on a one to four scale. Um, so your perfect score is four, you're at a three point one zero, so you're kind of hovering between good and great, but you are doing better than your comparison. A normal score for a district with your size and demographics is two point nine three. Again, you're at three point one zero. As you look to, always improve. When you send out information from parents, overwhelmingly parents want an email. And they do also value automated phone or text notifications. So that's kind of your first tier of how parents want to hear from you. Kind of in your second tier, um, your parent portal, so let's take your infinite campus, your power school, whatnot. Um, school websites, direct meetings, newsletters, and Facebook. Then at the bottom, so these are not getting any eyeballs, at least from parents. So as you think about, you know, boy, I, I'm, well, let me give you a concrete example. Ten years ago, it felt like every district had an active Twitter account talking about basketball games and what time the JV were gonna start and upcoming holiday concerts and whatever, um, all of it was put on Twitter. And then we just saw a huge decline in how, how parents wanted to get it. Um, so really nobody looks at Twitter, so sometimes we'll have districts say, boy, should we restart it? And the answer is really no, especially for Lake Mills. You could put something on Twitter and it looks like parents really just aren't gonna go there for information. So I wouldn't put any eggs in that basket. Um, now your newspaper's interesting, because even though a lot of parents don't look at that, um, I bet if I look back at some of your community surveys, I bet that your number one place for non-parents, non-staff to look for you is anything paper that is, that is concrete. Newspapers or newsletters are really where non-parents, non-staff get their information. So just going back to kind of that catering, different messages to different groups through different media. Um, while newspapers may not be super critical for parents, they will be for the broader community. So just think about what message you're sending to what group at what time through what channel. Um, overall satisfaction, then for your, uh, parents, similar question, slightly different. How likely would you be to recommend our schools to a friend or family member? Same ways to look at this here, um, except for longitudinal data, which we'll get for you next year. Um, your score is seven point nine nine, so you're well above your comparisons at a score of seven point six one, so you're above what's normal. Um, and you got a lot more greens than reds. Um, your score is well above five, well above neutral. You got over a third of parents that are giving you a perfect score. So thirty-six and fifteen is fifty-one percent, plus another twenty-one, so you got more than seven and ten parent respondents that will act as an ambassador on your behalf, and that too is very high. So not only do people have a, a positive association with you, but when they have a positive association, they're pretty willing to strike up a conversation with others about that. And then you add in the other ten percent here, and I forgot where I left off, you know, about eight and ten parents have a positive association with the, with the, with the direction you're going. Um, I recognize that's a bit of fire hose drinking, but that's the data I have for you. So any questions as we round out parent communications or anything else about staff or parents or next year, questions or anything else that I can do for you while I'm on your little screen here?
I was wondering about the, um, the summaries. So I feel like in the summaries, communication was a strength, but then also in other parts of the summaries, it was like, no, it's very bad. So I guess what is your sense of, it, it just, communication came up a lot and it was both positive and negative. So I don't, I guess, how do we as a district like analyze that and figure out like what, what part of communication? Because we have the teacher to parent, we have, you know, district to parent, district to teach, we have, there's so many avenues and people, and I don't know, it's just hard to tease it out.
It, it's, it, it's really hard. You know, I don't want to sugarcoat that. Um, I think just for clarification, when you say summaries, do you mean the comment summaries?
Yeah, the comment summaries.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's maybe the blessing and the curse of qualitative data is, you know, you think you want to do something and then the very, literally the next comment will be the exact opposite of what you just heard, and you're like, well, now what? What am I supposed to do with that? Usually the way I'd recommend to peel that onion apart is to look by building and grade. So typically what you'll find is, in aggregate, you're always gonna kind of end up with some unhappiness and some happiness. Um, for your younger grades and those schools that are serving your younger grades, the more in-person things, the more I have the opportunity to be at school, talk to teachers, and have a conversation with them face to face is usually your biggest bang for your buck for your elementary school kiddos and their parents. As you get older, uh, As you get older, um, usually it's more things that you can email me. Um, what you could think about doing, and actually I thought this was a pretty creative use of a, we did a communications specific survey for Port Washington recently, and they also asked, how many times do you want to be communicated with? Because they were hearing from parents, I'm on overload. And when everything is important, nothing is important, and I get six emails from you a day, and I just end up skipping them. So they just blatantly asked, how often do you want to hear from us? Do you want something once a day, once a month, once a year, once a quarter, once a semester? And they really saw that the communication frequency preference varied a lot by grade. So typically you're gonna be a little bit more heavy-handed in those kindergarten, first, second grade years and then really back off in your sophomore, junior, senior years. It might be a little more heavy-handed when you're looking at those transition years from like eighth grade to ninth grade. Uh, but you could thinking about adding frequency because a lot of messages were just lost because too many things were sent. Um, but you're right that that is a really tough nut to crack. I wish I had something smarter to say, and you're right, it's really hard.
Because I liked how the school experience one, I feel, is that one? Or no, the question about school involvement means to me, and it was segregated with the comment summary of elementary, middle, high school.
Yeah.
Um, or even there was a comment to, um, in there about, um, you know, retakes, a concern about academic rigor with allowing unlimited retakes or things like that. And it's like, well, that must apply to high school, I would think, but it's all kind of grouped together. So it would just be nice to have elementary, middle, high school, maybe for all
Yeah.
Of the comments.
And even though we didn't do that, Tanya would have that power because there's the desegregation purposes can go pretty deep. So if Tanya wanted to say, you know, show me communication preferences for our upper elementary grades at Lake Mills Elementary. Uh, and just show me those comments and try to make a theme from that. Uh, but you're right, we didn't in the comment analysis for for the sake of space, but you could, you could go down that path. That data would be available to you.
Okay. And this is just a curiosity. Are the comment summaries AI-generated or is it a human actually typing that paragraph?
Um, yes, is the answer. I wish we could rely more on AI. Um, we did actually, so our, this is a longer answer than what you asked. So our, um, tech lead actually has a PhD in AI from the University of Minnesota. He says a lot of things I don't understand, but I've gotten really good at nodding my head. Um, he actually created a program to do that internally so that we can, you know, keep our data internal. Um, we actually do read through all the comments because what we found, we've done some tests with with some more popular AI platforms, is the longer comments will dominate the rest and the comments that AI reads first will then set the tone for the rest of it. And we don't like that. You know, just because I take the survey early doesn't mean that my comment should be more valuable than somebody takes a a survey later on. So we do have some AI systems in place, but we also basically do our own little mini qualitative dissertation and we look at comments from top to bottom. And we always work on them in pairs. So I might start from the bottom. My colleague Scott will start from this top and we use AI, but then we we actually write those paragraphs that you see in there.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Out of curiosity, how long does it take you to kind of, once you get the deadline, right, and have all the information? How long does it take you to generate and kind of look through everything?
Um, for the comments?
I just in general, all of it.
Oh, boy. Um, usually we like about a two to three week lead time, depending on the time of year. Um, so you did yours in spring, which is about when maybe sixty to seventy percent of our customers do their surveys. Um, so about three weeks or so is typically what's normal to package all that data together.
Okay. Wrong though, it might not, I mean, we might not see a lot necessarily.
At the expense of administering a survey for the community every year to take into account that.
All right. Are there any other questions? If not, thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Well, thank you. And again, I appreciate your flexibility. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next board report, CISA two from Ken.
Sure, thanks. Well, I attended the, um, each year CISA two has an annual convention. And the primary goal of that convention is really to elect the representatives from each of the, what they call groups or clusters within CISA two. CISA two actually has about, um, roughly about sixty districts in total, uh, and eleven groupings. Uh, so we are actually, um, there it is. We are what's called Cluster Eight. It's a one-year term for representative at the CISA two level. Uh, Cambridge, Jefferson, Johnson Creek, Lake Mills and Watertown are part of our group here. Uh, the gentleman from Watertown, uh, decided not to to run for to represent that cluster this year. So a new board member from Cambridge was very excited about, uh, raising her hand and volunteering. So we elected her. Her name is Annie Lavelle. And seems like she's gonna do a nice job. So, um, so we, uh, you know, it's it's a very formal meeting in the sense they run it like a board meeting and a bit. It's a little looser than that, but they'll always have a guest speaker. And, uh, and again, just to say that that CISA two, uh, is a very help, they they have a lot of resources. It's a very helpful organization. Uh, you know, you're pooling all those school resources, funneling it towards one area to to help out. Um, the speaker at our, uh, this year was uh, Trish Kilpin, the executive director of the Office of School Safety from the Wisconsin Department of Justice. And she gave a nice presentation, uh, with that. What what I found fascinating was, uh, you know, some things stick in your mind or are new. She said, uh, you know, there's a lot of a discussion about, um, someone that wants to, um, do an act of violence in a in a school setting. And she said, you know, uh, a person that does that has made that decision often three to six months before the actual event. And that, um, the red flags, so to speak, between that time and the event uh, is the challenge to actually recognize those red flags and, uh, kind of put them together. And she was very, uh, informative about really creating kind of a community multidisciplinary team of people to identify those red flags and things like that.
So Ken, that's what the whole administrative team was trained on this summer by Trish, um, through the behavior threat assessment, um, management. So um, uh, yeah, she's an amazing speaker during that event, but just for the public sense that the whole admin team was trained and received their certificate of training for that.
Well, that's great. And and she did, uh, also say the importance of having a school resource, uh, officer.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, so that would be the basic of the convention.
Yeah, that's a a great presentation, I'm sure to see.
All right. Any questions?
All right. Thanks, Ken. Um, the next up is the facility referendum. Uh, we've still been meeting at the core. I think what's, there was a one week, the one meeting of a two-week period. So we were, the last core meeting was a couple, a week ago. Um, and the highlights are in there. The one thing we didn't talk about, but is in this, the public comment part, the bus barn design, um, the state approved it and it will go now to the city for permitting. And then also for the solar project, um, it was finalized by the state and will begin the elementary school portion once the solar panels are delivered and the middle school roof project later this summer. Um, from the core team, uh, the groundbreaking will be at the elementary school in November. There hasn't been a date yet set. So, but once it is, it'll be a hula and all that.
That meeting's tomorrow. The meeting tomorrow is tomorrow to set, um, the groundbreaking date for the elementary project. So, um, and then kind of the circumstances surrounding that. Um, I would also add that we have had several items on the city council agenda and a shout out to the city who's been working very closely with us. Most of those items take three readings, which would of course take three city council meetings to get through. They've been trying to waive those three readings so that we're able to break ground um, a little bit sooner. So we appreciate appreciate all the work, um, and just the flexibility that the city has been, um, giving us throughout this process as well.
Yeah. And so then the cores has been discussing more of like the the deep finer details, I mean, of the high school. Middle school's pretty much inside of the middle school is pretty much set. And then the elementary school is through the design and, I don't know, design, engineering, construction, drawing phase. So that that's where we sit. So.
So bidding is next for that then, for the elementary?
I didn't hear.
Going out to bid, like bidding for the project is next?
Yes, um, they're getting ready. That was at our last core team meeting. So getting ready, getting ready to bid that whole project out. That was closer to winter time, I believe. I have to look back at my notes.
The bid, the the packets go out, I want to say at the end of July.
Okay.
So then that's
Okay.
Yeah. So the construction, construction packets go out for bid for the the different companies to bid on. That goes out at the end of this month. So.
Will the solar panel projects be finished by the time school is in or is there going to be disruption to learning or safety with lots of trucks out there?
Um, really the only disruption to anything would be the replacement of the roof and that's slated for next week. Otherwise, um, when they're up on the roof installing solar panels, really they said it's not going to be anything that's going to interrupt learning, especially in the elementary because that's on the gym roof. So they said very minimal distractions and they'll try to even work around when we're in school, but, um, that portion shouldn't take um, very long. Um, we are looking at starting the solar panel installation closer to mid to late September because we had to wait till everything was through approval to be able to order them. Battery installation, same thing too. That's really just going in the storage room at the middle school so that, um, will be no interruption to learning. We did our intake meeting, um, last Friday. So I work through, uh, the Public Service Commission to get everything uploaded into the grant systems. Um, I had to provide my passport and my driver's license and everything like that as the overseer of the grant. So they have to make sure that you're a credible source too as you're, um, working through that. So had to be vetted. Um, we do plan to have that project done then by the end of this year. We have until next July to complete the grant. Um, according to the grant guidelines.
And then do you feel budget-wise for all the referendum things that we are on track and moving towards the wish list items?
Um, I don't see us moving towards a lot of the wish list items. Um, we have regular budget meetings with Findorf, Tasha and I do. So so far the budget is trending well. Um, probably one of the bigger things that we've done is the high school project expanded a little bit just to be able to accommodate the new office structure, which also accommodates the grand staircase in order to provide a safe and secure entrance without that staircase and the additional square footage onto the office at the high school. We would not have been able to lock down the upper and lower gyms because we need a free flow of, um, movement between the two gyms just due to the JV one and JV two games that are going on back to back with our varsity games. So by, um, ha- adding square footage onto that north part of the building, we were able to accommodate, again, the new office space and accommodate the staircase. It also helped us accommodate the new elevator, which would have been, um, a little bit of a tight squeeze to get that all in. So that ended up being, um, a little extra money, but it's still within budget. So we won't know until we get into the project. I mean, they're gonna estimate high like any contractor does, just with worry about tariffs and things like that. Um, but otherwise we're right in budget. I'd say one of the things we just, um, saw, we were we're watching the electrical bid because we started the electrical work already at the elementary. Just due to, um, a couple of failing light systems, um, and that at first we thought was going to come in way high. Um, now that we got the actual bid, it came in under what we were expecting. So we're gonna see that trending, you know, over, under. There's contingency money. So, um, we plan right now, we're doing very well. I think what's we won't, I guess, again, we won't know until we're completing the end of the high school project. Um, how much money we'd have maybe left over in savings. And then also the interest, um, that we're making off of the bonds as well. Right now the interest rate is still trending fairly high and is holding steady. So, um, should be some monies from that as well. So like I said, we've kind of, right now we're good. Um, but we'll know better once probably a year into the project if there's any cost savings associated with that.
Are there any questions? Other questions, I should say. All right, moving on. Uh, our standing item for a little bit, uh, the student cellphone use in schools. There, uh, Tanya attached a couple of, uh, different articles um, about just diff- the news about schools, uh, cellphone use in schools and and, um, so. But I think the policy committee is
Yeah, we will be, um, I will be scheduling a policy committee here soon. I'm actually doing the next round of Niola updates on, uh, Wednesday morning. So, um, we thought, we went, we we thought we'd start taking this through policy because actually cellphone usage starts with board policy and goes down from there. I know there was interest in, um, administering a parent survey, probably ahead of doing any type of policy work. And so this is an AI-generated parent survey, I will say that. Um, that would be a little easier because it is hard to write a survey again without biases. As you can see, um, from, um, Rob Demus, there's a, a lot of knowledge and research that goes into writing a valid and reliable surveys. So, um, I just, with this, I wasn't sure, um, if there was any other information, you know, among the board that you'd like to see asked or something that we have in the survey that you're like, you'd rather not see asked. Um, the plan would be once we have the survey finalized, um, to potentially administer that to parents um, right away at the beginning of the school year or even possibly during registration if we were able to get that put together soon enough.
I wonder if we need to, like, I wonder if parents will have different opinions on use at the elementary level versus the high school level. So I'm wondering if they might do a survey for each of their levels. You know what I mean? Like
Oh, yeah.
Like for my elementary student, absolutely no, I don't want any. Whereas in the high school, maybe they think during passing is appropriate. So
Yeah, that's a good point.
I'm not sure about that. And then I also think there should just maybe be a general, like, any additional comments, you know? So there are a few open-ended questions on this one. Um, but maybe just, you know, do you have any other comments you want to be considered?
Will we be able to, uh, kind of like Rob's segregate out for the elementary, the middle and and high school answers?
If we do it through like a Google survey, that's probably not. So I mean, we'll probably have to hand disaggregate that data.
And then we had talked too about possibly doing this as part of enrollment so that if you're enrolling your, maybe that could help us with the various grade levels. Because then when you're doing a certain, you know, you're enrolling your middle schooler, then you would have a survey pop up to be able to apply to them and vice versa. For, I don't know how the enrollment works if that would be possible, but because I'm just looking at our thirty-three percent, you know, participation rate for that survey. And it's like, I know that's normal, but also I'm like, oh, God, only thirty-three percent. You know, we just want to make sure we get as many voices. So just trying to think of what's the best avenue to administer this so that we get.
So enrollment, maybe maybe the registration.
Right. I'm wondering if that's an option. We had, we talked about that, Megan, but.
It starts August first.
Oh, yeah.
But I I also question, like, as a parent, when I'm doing registration, I just want to get through it and do it.
One more thing.
If I had another survey, I would probably say I'll come back to that later. And that's just an honest opinion on kind of how things roll in my household. So I I don't know, just based on that, if we would, if it would help or not. Maybe it's just another way to access it. You know, I don't know.
I think we definitely do, like you said, though, need to be able to see, because that was my first thought. Well, I could answer this differently for one age level versus another. Or, you know, I might have a comment for, you know, a cellphone versus a smartwatch. You know what I mean? So allowing for various answers, grade level, you know, tech piece, whatever.
Right. Because I mean, currently at the elementary, there's not really any cellphone use. use at all. So you're right, that survey data is going to look very different than in middle school, mostly during the lunch hour, whereas high school, you know, it's a little more fluid. So, okay.
And then the other thing is just making sure our Spanish speaking families have their voices heard too. I don't know if we can get it in Spanish or just have, you know, our multilingual team calling families to say, hey, these are, this is just like a verbal survey or something. Just want to make sure.
Okay.
That everyone's included.
All right. Are there any other comments, questions?
That's what we're kind of saying, like, beginning, trying to administer it sometime during the beginning of the year, early enough so you have the data. But just thinking through that, like by building, might do something a little different where even if it's once registration is complete, maybe it's even through, you know, our our Skylark system or something like that where it, you know, if you're a parent and you have got, you've got three children in the building, you're probably going to get three surveys. So, okay.
Can we put people in a drawing if they complete the survey and they can win something?
Well, if they don't want to fill it out.
I know. Yeah, I guess it's kind of like when you vote. If you don't vote, you don't get to complain. Yeah, but, yeah, okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Moving on to the administrative reports. And Justin is up.
All right. I'm Justin Anan, athletic director. I'll try to keep this brief. So the first three slides are stuff the WA gave us leading up to the decision to pass NIL. That's what I'm going to talk about here. So the name, image and likeness was passed in April by the WA Board of Members, which an athletic director, you are one. And you can go to the next one. So these were some things that they were telling us beforehand, and I'll kind of elaborate more on these in the the previous slides. But this was just stuff that they were trying to give us to inform us before our decision and the vote that we had. We can go to the next slide. So this one kind of hit home a little more on me, what I needed to know. All right. I need to understand the rule, okay, for the school's responsibility, the student athlete. I'm the person that's going to tell them what kind of is happening. The parent, the student, if they feel that there's an NIL deal for them, they find that, myself, any school members, things like that, they don't initiate in that. It's all solely on the student and family. And then they would execute the deal. It is my job to inform the students and coaches of the rules, provide resources. And then if there was a violation, just like there would be in any type of violation, I would need to report it to the WA. Down there, it kind of says the realistic, who's this going to impact? Okay. The yellow is the large deal and the rest are very small. So the impact, I think, right now is not going to be very significant in Lake Mills at least. We can go to the next slide. So here's some things that you need to know. The WA approved it, like I said, April 25th for our personal experience, appearances they can do, endorsements, promotional activities. The big thing, if I was Justin Anan and I wanted to go out and get an NIL deal and I was a high school student, I cannot have Lake Mills anywhere on myself. I can't say WA anywhere. I can't say Capital Conference. I have to just be Justin Anan doing, maybe I have a branding thing. I had a JA and I'm selling t-shirts. I can do that, but I can't have anything doing with Lake Mills. I have to be myself. So that was a big thing. You can see some other guidelines, no tobacco, alcohol, things of those lines. And then if somebody was going to give you a deal, they can't pay you on performance. So if I just scored 40 points, somebody wants to come to me and say, here's $100 for your 40 points. That's not allowed either. You can go to the next slide. So it was another thing that they kind of gave us over there. But violations, accepting money or gifts tied to athletic performance, like I said, endorsing products or events as an athlete, signing contracts for athletic services, allowed only if you, like I said, were not with the school team or WA, can't use the school branding, no professional representation, and they can't conflict with academic or team commitments. So they couldn't fly to California and they're going to miss school because they're executing this NIL deal. As far as the business side of it, I don't have a ton in there, but let's say said business has already been given to the booster club or the school in some capacity. They cannot go and say, I'm a junior now. I want to give you $1,000. Because they have been giving the school for four years, they couldn't do that. Now, if there was an incoming freshman and they're like, I'm not giving the school anymore. I'm not giving the booster club. I want to give to this incoming freshman, set amount. They could do that because that person hadn't been in school when that donation had been made to the booster club or the high school. I don't see a lot of businesses seeing that's going to be beneficial to them because a lot of times when they're donating to our booster club or our schools, they're seeing the impact across students in general. Now, let's say some place, you know, in Waukesha was like, this kid's awesome. I want to give something for this because it's going to help our brand. They have no ties to school. They could do that. Like I said, the parent and athlete would have to orchestrate that deal. I don't think I have any more. Maybe one more. Oh, this was just a plug for the booster club. Get people involved. Do you have any questions? Send me an email. We've done a lot of cool things. Our golf audience coming up August 10. But any questions on the NIL? I tried to explain it the best I can. I am still learning the process of it as well as it's very new to us. But I think I have a good understanding, at least on the foundational level, what we need to do.
Thank you.
Justin, is there, I imagine there's, has it come up how this might intersect with recruitment to colleges at all?
Not necessarily colleges. I don't know if I have a great answer for you on that at the moment. I have not seen that where, you know, coaches have came in and like, hey, I want to give you said amount. College has their own NIL rules. You can sign into a deal once you got to that point. They wouldn't really come in and try to get like a 15 year old in the sense of NIL. Now, there's things that they could probably start offering and have conversations are. But I don't, I don't have a great answer for you.
No, that's fine. I was just curious.
Questions about the other thing that was voted, unlimited coaches contact. Are you running into any issues with our current fall sports or spring sports or whatever? Are are the coaches working together? Are they, I mean, with unlimited?
I was going to say to to kind of piggyback on that, not only working together, but working with the students because we want them to be well rounded, right? We want to have them opportunities in sports, music, jobs, you know. So what are you seeing with that so far? Because when I heard that too, I was like, ah!
Yeah. How I phrased it, and I will say, one, I think our athletic coaches have done a great job. I wanted to preference to them just as much as the athletes. I don't want them burnt out as we don't want our athletes burnt out because a lot of them are going to go into their season as a coach. And if we're going to do 30 days this summer and then you're going to go for another six, you know, months and then same thing for an athlete. So we already previously had a calendar that we've done when I was coaching and continued through. So when we get to the spring, sometimes I send out a couple calendars. Coaches start putting things like their youth camps in there. They put when they would have an open gym. And then we try to make sure there's not overlapping things. Now, it doesn't always perfect, but we always make sure we don't want them to have to decide. And if they do decide one or the other, there's not a like a anger or consequence in that sense. I preference that I don't necessarily want them to do any more than they've done in the past because they've already offered a lot and been there for the students and giving them opportunities, which I thought they did a really good job of this year, working together and not saying, we need to do X amount of more. I know, talking to other athletic directors, there are some football teams doing 25 padded practices right now and they're doing multiple things where other teams are coming in. Just talking to our football coach, she's like, I don't, I love football, but I couldn't imagine doing it for 20 days. And then all of a sudden, they have their contact this this week, which is five days, which has been what it always had been. The thing that I like about the rule is there's flexibility that there's so many times when you did have an open gym, you couldn't say anything to the athlete, where you could go out there now and say, hey, I just noticed this on this. I did make the clear, talking to students, students weren't craving two hour long practices. They did like some instruction, 20 minute skill session, but they still wanted that free play, open gym opportunity where it was a little more laid back in the summer with all also getting some feedback from their coach. I also preference it like, the head coach doesn't need to be there every day. We have a staff and if somebody else could make it, utilize our staff as a whole so it's not overwhelming for you. And then if a kid can't come, obviously, the the rule in the WA is that you can never make it mandatory. You cannot do attendance. There's no incentives that you've been there the whole summer or things like that. So overall, I think it's really good. I've heard there's been some pressure when you hear said community is offering a ton of things and they're doing full on practices all year. Well, some parents are getting concerned that we're not doing enough. We have not felt that in the capital when we had our meeting, but I know there's some bigger schools that had that happen. And then they were doing what they've always done and it went really well. And they're like, we don't want to put more on kids. Well, then the parents started saying some things and then the community members. So like, they felt pressure. They stayed strong. They didn't add more. But that's the the fear a little bit too. So I think we've done a good job communicating and giving options.
Because I was going to say too, you know, we already have limited gym space and time. And so as we continue to work through some of these things, might just be something to watch as well. And if that needs to be edited in our policy, you know, how you rank who gets first choice or whatever. So.
And then also for that calendar that you you said you provided, can you please include the like the music directors and the art directors? So if like there's a band camp or if there's show choir practice, so then that that those things can be also planned concurrently? Yeah.
Just to segue a little bit, because I know marching band camp's coming, is it two weeks? But I talked to Kelly and we said when we could have it to give the best opportunities and things like that. But yes, I agree. Like, and then link crew, we orchestrated that they would not have any practices during their time when they do their training and things like that because we had to move a tennis tournament because it was in the morning. There's some, the beginning of the school year is weird when you can do things. So yeah.
Sounds good. And just so you're considering all, and to make the most well rounded, the the kids that want to participate in everything.
Yes.
That's possible. So.
I think just looking at attendance wise, sometimes there's a ton of kids there and then there's vacations happen and then there's camps that happen. And I think our coaches understand that and been very flexible and giving opportunities is what I preferred as we went into this new thing. I think the flexibility to have some, you know, more conversation was awesome, but it is a little scary at times too.
Okay.
I think it was really nice too to know there was that one week, 4th of July, where there was nothing.
Yes.
I think as a parent, you struggle to find time to get away with your kid. And high schoolers especially, they want to be at this stuff. So to have that, okay, I know this week I could plan something and not have to argue with my kid to have him come. So if we could continue that, I think that would be great.
And that's a WA rule. They might fluctuate the dates a little bit, but July 1st to July 6th was this year's date. You could run something that had be deemed an open gym, but it was a dead period. You couldn't do a contact day. There's a little difference there. If you want to do an open gym, it's still open. Their contact days are open to everybody too. I don't know why they did like the two things because it confuses a little bit, but a contact day, I would say is a little more like instruction than an open gym, free play. If, that's how I think they kind of preference it. But yes.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now on to Tasha and the numbers.
The numbers, the number lady. Sometimes people come in. Okay, so I'm going to go over a few things tonight, but I'm going to start with the 24, 25 year end numbers and actuals. So we recently just had our financial audit, which was on last week, Thursday and Friday. And everything is coming in really good. No, no comments at this point. They're really just reviewing our our documents and the things that we're submitting to them. We do our audit fairly early in the year. So they also audit our July books. So they won't be able to get that obviously until August 1. So there's some things that we're waiting to actually send over to them. But so far, so good with that. So to get a little bit into what they're what they're auditing and what they're looking at for year end, despite having our about $700,000 budgeted deficit, we ended the fiscal year with a much smaller deficit of about $29,000. So I'm, you know, pleased to report that. Specifically, we ended our fiscal year 2% over in our revenues and only 0.3% over in our expenses. So really, really good results there. This does include the new purchase for the Chromebooks that approved fund balance expense for the Chromebooks as well as the bus, the additional bus. So we're beginning our fiscal year 25, 26, still very favorably with a fund balance of 30.6%. So we're still in a really great place. I'm very pleased with the numbers. The finance, the audited financials won't be released until they finish that up in the fall, early, like fall, early winter. And then we will have a representative from Whitfley come again, virtually if that's okay. Otherwise, in person too, if need be. They've been coming virtually the past couple of years, but come to give that report to us sometime in the in the early winter. I'm thinking it'll be. Any questions with any of the the year end stuff? I know I have, I have documents in there that you could have looked at too, but I can talk through any of it if you'd like, just referencing the 24, 25 for right now.
I just, it's very, very pleasant to hear that we're only ending 28,600 and change behind when we budgeted that much and when we made over, it sounds like $300,000 of Chromebooks and new van purchases.
Yes, it came to just over, I think, 305, 591 is what those two purchases came to.
And switches, yeah. So that's, that's wonderful. So, yeah.
Just to note, the the referendum funds are really separate.
Correct.
Just wanted to say that.
Yes.
And that, yeah.
So I'll talk a little bit about that too. But what I'm reporting and talking about right now, as we know, we have a number of different funds that the school district keeps books on. But tonight, we'll be talking mainly on the general fund, so the 10 fund. And Ken, as you had pointed out, 49 fund is our referendum fund, which is in the reports that you have, but mainly what we're discussing tonight is that general operating fund. Okay. So then moving on, I want to talk a little bit about the July 1 aid estimate. So every year by July 1, DPI releases this equalized aid estimate. And it's an estimate because it's based on our budgeted numbers and not our actual numbers. So they're looking at districts' shared costs across the state and what they've budgeted for the year. So what I report on now will be different than what I report on on October 15th when we have our actual numbers. So just kind of a something to think about as if you're ever looking back and saying, well, wait, we budgeted a different or we talked about a different number earlier on. It's budgeted versus actual. So that's one thing I wanted to point out. And then I also wanted to reiterate how the revenue limit formula works, equalization aid or the state aid versus our property taxes. So they have that inverse relationship. School districts have a revenue limit that they cannot exceed by law to to have in their revenues. And that's made up of primarily equalization aid, so state aids, where you'll hear it referred to as a number of things, and and property taxes. And they have an inverse relationship, meaning if one goes up, the other goes down and vice versa. So it's really important to know, especially this year, as we talk about what we are estimating.
A question about that.
Sure.
With the city's reassessment, will that affect, I mean, because the city's reassessment will cause a higher property value for overall.
So that'll have an impact on like our mill rate and that's part of that calculation.
But not on the equalized aid.
No.
Okay.
So our July 1 aid estimate that we received on July 1st is just over 8.6 million. And this is the first year in a very long time we've seen a decrease. So we saw a decrease of about 6.8%, about just over 630,000 in state aid. So remember, that means if state aid goes down, property taxes are going to go up. And that is based on a decision that was made at the legislative level. Business officials across the state were very surprised to see that there was no additional funds put into the state equalization aid this year. And that's something, I don't have the exact figure of the last time that happened, but I believe it was in the 70s that they, that this hasn't happened since the 70s, that there's been no additional funds put into. that this hasn't happened since the seventies, that there's been no additional, uh, funds put into, to those, to that bucket of money. Um, so it's something that I, um, would anticipate impacting our community as well as many communities across the state. I believe it was 66% of school districts are seeing a decrease in their state equalization aid. Which again, it has that inverse effect with, with those property taxes.
So then, uh, just to explain, it's so say our budget was 100,000. If it was 100,000 last, this past school year and 100,000 now, taxes for property taxes would go up.
If equalization goes down, yes.
So that if with the equalization going down 6.8%, the taxes for the citizens.
Roughly, right? There's a lot of, there's other factors that are in there too, but when you think about those big buckets, yes, you can.
Even if we don't spend any more money.
Correct. It's just coming to us from a different, um, resource. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Um, so that, that's something to make note of. Um, let me see here. So I'll move on kind of to what we are budgeting for this next year. Um, there was no increase in the per pupil aid adjustment. So we're still at the $742 per pupil there. And there was an increase of $325 per pupil in the revenue limit. So that's something that was approved. Uh, we were anticipating that due to the, um, to the legislation. Um, we have a total revenue budget in our general fund of about 20.4 million. Um, and these numbers do reflect an estimate of our enrollment. So enrollments could make that number fluctuate, that general aid that had just talked about, as well as the equalized property value. Um, moving on to the expenditure budget. Um, this is going to include the 2.9 for 95% wage increase. That was agreed upon as well as, um, a number of different things that, which I'll touch on. The total for our fund 10 comes to about 20.5 million. Um, which creates an anticipated desk deficit of almost 1.1 million for the 25, 26 school year. This is based on a number of things. Like I said, it's based on those wage increases. Um, we do have a declining enrollment, um, and inflation in general. So we're seeing a little bit in our insurance, in, um, you know, fuel. Uh, our food, food costs are going to increase, which that's a different fund. So something, you know, a little bit different there. But technology, other materials, things like that are all increasing. Um, some of the biggest things that I'm seeing that, um, are going to impact our budget next year that is increases in, is our special ed, um, expenditures. So if you look kind of in, in some of the reports and, and do a little math, you're seeing that our, our transfer from fund 10 is moving from, let me just find the right report here. So in 24, 25, we were at about, nope, that's the wrong one, I'm sorry. I have a lot of things in front of me. Our operating transfer out, we budgeted about 2.1. We finalized that just over, just over that. Next year, we're budgeting 2.6. So that's that fund, um, that transfer from fund 10 into fund 27, the special ed. So while there, you've probably heard that there's an increase in the, um, in the, the state reimbursement, that's the word I'm looking for, thank you. From 30, about 30% to 42 in the first year and 45 in the second year. That's based on prior year expenditures. So that's something to think about, right? So we will get reimbursed, um, this year for last year's expenditures at a rate of what they're calling 42%. But again, it's a shared cost, so it's one bucket. So the more that everybody spends makes that bucket decrease. So I only budgeted 40% to be, um, a little conservative there. A lot of districts were talking and we're seeing that we're about 2 to 3% of what, what, um, the actual number of, um, reimbursement rate is. So next year, we will be reimbursed at 45%. So I'm certain, again, that depends on the spend, expenditures on this year's expenses. So while there's an increase there, we're also increasing some of our expenses. We had some additional positions. We had the OT position, the speech path position. We had a 0.5 para position that were, that were added into that. So that's where we're seeing some of those, excuse me, increases as well.
So are you on the expenditures thing or document that you shared with us and looking at that special revenue trust? Or the special education expenditures line, is that what you're looking at?
You're on the expenses preliminary budget?
Nope. Sorry.
Are you on the summary one?
I think I'm on the summary one that has the actual 23, 24, budget 24, 25, actual 20, that one. I guess I'm looking at.
What is the title of it?
Expenditures, it just says, sorry, expenses preliminary budget.
Thank you.
25, 26.
Okay. The transfers, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. So the actual turned up, what in 23, 24 was 1.9 million. The budget last year was 2 point, we'll call it 2.3 million. The actual came into, came in just over. I think we came about $5,000 over our budget in the transfer. And then this next year, we're budgeting 2.6 million.
Okay.
And that's, like I said, that's with the additional.
Are you being as conservative as you normally are? Or, I mean, cause we have talked about like, sometimes you're so conservative that we're like freaking out at the beginning and then it's all fine. Or like, I guess if you changed your strategy at all to try to be more on point.
Um, I really haven't. I think that at this point of the year, I haven't, just knowing there's so many uncertainties, especially with title funds and, and things like that. I haven't at this point. I think when I tighten things up and get a little less conservative is when we make our budget adjustments in October.
Okay. That'll be more.
Mm-hmm.
And then as of right now, when you look at, if we were to do that 1.1 million dollar deficit, what would that bring our fund balance percentage down to? Just.
About 24, 25%.
Okay. Just at 20, yeah, mid 25.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I calculated. Okay. Do the OTPT positions come out of this, that's the special ed bucket?
That's the special ed, correct.
Tasha, is, is the funding that I think the federal government's holding on to 72 million for the state right now. Is that the same, uh, funding that we heard about for special education and lunches and things? Or in other words, um,
No.
If, if for some reason, or for us, where would that money apply to, so to speak? That funding?
You know what, do you want to answer that one?
Right, it's, it's mostly the title funding right now, so yes, that will hurt us. So, um, the, the funds that are being withheld right now are Title II ways. So that's all of our staff development. So we were actually at a meeting this morning to see if there were contracts we could get out of and things that we could shift around. So, um, we were already starting that strategy. Uh, there's other things wrapped up in, um, Title II C and Title III, which is related to, uh, more of our EL funding and our migrant funding. We don't really get a lot, any in migrant funding, but it would affect, um, some of the staff development that we do with our EL program. Right now, we surrender the Title III funds to CISA 2 because they force you to if you get below a certain amount. But we still take advantage of the staff development that's provided, um, through that. And then, um, they just released, um, some of the Title IV money with the 21st century after school grants. We don't, um, qualify for that. So that did not affect us, but there's about 10,000 and another portion of, um, Title IV that would also be withheld. That, um, we would have to figure out how to compensate for that. So, uh, yes, it will, it will affect us, um, quite a bit this year. If we do not get the funding, that's part of, well, that's probably about 90% of the reason. I was out in Washington DC. Uh, we were telling our stories out on Capitol Hill of how we use that money and how it's going to affect us if we don't, um, get that. I mean, essentially we're moving forward with this year's budget. But if we got notice that those title funds are gone for next year, it would pretty much halt staff development completely in the school district.
Okay. Well, thank you for traveling to Washington for that, it's important.
Some visits, Washington.
So, um, kind of next steps are our annual meeting, which is going to be September 15th. And that's where we'll report on, you know, this approved budget, knowing that there will be a number of changes coming, right? On October 15th. And that's just the way that school finance works with the timing. Um, so again, this will, this budget will be published in the paper and discussed at our annual meeting. And then budget adjustments will be made, uh, after that October 15th release, where we'll tighten everything up, look at everything a little bit closer. We'll have more information about title funds, things like that. We'll really get, um, a little bit, um, cleaner numbers with that. And we'll, we'll have more information on enrollment figures. We'll have the private vouchers by then. Um, open enrollment numbers will be more, more, more tied down. And so we'll have some tighter figures there. Right now, we are estimating, we're still net positive on our open enrollment, which is really favorable for us. The, um, the rate for open enrollment increased this past year for both the, um, regular education and our special education students. And, um, knowing that we have more coming in than we have enrolling out is really, really great for our district. And so, um, we take a lot of, we take a lot of pride in that as well. So that's helping. Um, so the estimated levy at this point is 13.6 million, providing a mill rate of $7.41. So that's at a, also at a conservative, um, um, increase in our equalized property values of 3%. So once we get that as well, we'll be able to tighten things up. Um, but I do, as Ken had pointed out earlier, we, we do have referendum funds and then we do have these 10 funds. And I just really want to make sure that we are able to communicate that the referendum funds, we did a lot of talking about how those were not going to increase our property taxes. And that still holds true. Um, that message is the same as it was before. Um, if, if property taxes do increase, um, it really is due to that. There was no additional funds added into the equalization aid for 10 fun, not fun 49. So I just want to make that publicly known and that message out there that, um, that, that that's still the case. Any questions?
The declining enrollment too, didn't we just have a big class graduate? Is that part of that? Cause like, what are our numbers for kindergarten this year?
Um, I, I guess we don't, we didn't have registration yet. For a 4K, they haven't changed. I mean, they're, they're trending high. Um, we haven't had any change since the last time I reported it out. However, um, usually about what the second, third week of August is when we'll start to see some fluctuation if we have an increase. So I mean, I think we have a, a balanced, um, class sizes, you know, where we're projecting, you know, about 100 across the board is going to be probably our new average. You know, we're graduating classes of 130, so that's why.
Which is good for class size to only have 100.
Right. I mean, it's kind of that equal, like that five sections across the board of about 20 students, you know, per section and a grade level. So that way it's not teetering so much that, um, our incoming 4K kindergarten are so much less than the grades, you know, right before them. So I think we're just seeing a leveling off. I think one more, we've got one more year of a larger class size yet. And then, then we're seeing more of an average kind of stability.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, we will move on to Tanya's report.
I'm just going to do these two really quickly. Um, Carmen provided some data on just her end of the year goals. Um, and we'll have her and the rec department come back at the beginning of the school year and do a more robust report. But really, um, we've seen really a, a nice, I think rounding out of enrichment programs balanced along with our rec programs. Um, there's been a lot of new opportunities for kids in the district that, um, are something other than just sports. So the Yost program, the young men's group, if you've been watching our social media pages, you've seen that. There's, um, some excitement surrounding those opportunities. And then, um, just that Madison College partnership. We've seen a, a lot of, um, opportunities for our high school kids. In fact, I think the biggest thing I can show you is at, uh, the Madison College Board meeting last Monday night. They issued the regional campus impact report. And if you look at pages 10 and 11, you will see that Lake Mills was featured, um, quite dramatically on the opportunities that we've been able to offer our high school kids, whether it's in, um, the welding academy or the health sciences, the nursing program. Um, Carmen is, uh, quoted in there as long as, as well as some of our students. Um, but Madison College has really been featuring the Lake Mills area school district in our data. Cause we've seen such a dramatic increase in opportunities that we're providing here in our partnership with the Fort Atkinson and the Watertown campuses as well. So I think to me, that article spoke volumes as far as what Carmen's been working on this past school year. So, um, I was telling some of these guys, um, when I, because I'm on the board of trustees from Madison College, that I didn't expect that. And I was paging through that while they were giving the report. And I actually teared up because I was like, wow, you know, sometimes you know your team is working hard and you don't always, you, you see stories about that, but to see that in print and see like all of the investment from the school district and the school board and the community is people are noticing, it's really making a, an impact. So, um, I really, I'm excited what next year is going to hold for us in, um, that department. Um, secondly, I have, um, the school nurses provided an end of the year report. It's, uh, the same report that they re- um, respond to with our data. Um, we are looking forward to employing the two school nurses directly next year. And I think they're excited about, um, that new relationship as well. And you can peruse that data, um, on your own if you haven't done so already.
Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Um, now are there, is there any people signed up for community input?
No.
All right. Then we will move on to our consent agenda. And this month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following. June 16, regular meeting minutes, June 24th, special meeting minutes, July 15, special meeting minutes, treasurer's report and vouchers and invoices and the personnel report. Are there any other, any of these that want to be pulled out separately for discussion? All right.
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Just a comment, it looks like, uh, at this point in the year, uh, it seems like we've had good retention of teachers. And at this point in the year, people have kind of made, would have made up their minds, right?
Hopefully. We're, the only position we have out there right now is our sixth grade math position due to Jeff Higstrom's move into the dean of students role. But I'd say, um, we, as of last week, we were wrapping up kind of technically, you know, some loose ends that we had with staffing. Um, I know Jamie was busy last week hiring paras. So, um, I think, I hope we are just about done.
Okay, great.
So are there any other questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motions.
Brianna Baslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Abby Hill.
Aye.
Amy Litter.
Aye. All right, we are now on to 6A action item, the approval of the preliminary 2025, 26 budget that Tasha talked about earlier.
Well, I'll move the board approve the preliminary 2025, 2026 budget as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Abby Hill.
Aye.
Brianna Baslik.
Aye.
Amy Litter.
Aye.
All right, the collective bargaining agreement with the LMEA, um, this was discussed previous meetings, so.
I'll move the board approve the collective bargaining agreement with the LMEA as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions, concerns or comments?
I just want to thank the members from the LMEA that are in attendance tonight. I know that's, uh, on a nice July night, maybe not the place you want to spend your time, but we do appreciate the collaboration with the LMEA and, and you appearing here tonight.
All right, hearing none, no other comments. Our questions, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Abby Hill.
Aye.
Brianna Baslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litter.
Aye. All right, 6C, the student academic standards for the 2025, 26 school year pursuant to 1, uh, 1/2012, parent 13.
No changes from previous years.
Okay. I'll move the board.
I'll move the board approve the district's student academic standards for the 2025, 2026 school year pursuant to Section 120.12, parentheses 13, of the Wisconsin State Standards.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Abby Hill?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right. Now, on to 6D, the gifts. And again, the community never ceases to amaze me and amaze us at the generous donations toward the school district. And, we thank sincerely all the gifts that are provided, so.
Well, I'll move the board thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. Those gifts are the Tyrania Ladies Club for their $100 donation to the Elementary School Garden, Equity Livestock Shipping Association of Johnson Creek for their $500 donation to the Lake Mills High School FFA, Cape for their $750 donation to the Mill, Danica Johnson for the donation of an Atlasus Nitro Pro electronic drum set, including dual-zone quiet mesh pads, 500 authentic BFD sounds, Bluetooth, USB, MIDI, Vic First 5A drumsticks, and a drum practice pad to the Lake Mills Music Department valued at $800. And then, Carmen Alexander of Wana Key for the, for the $1,000 donation to the Lake Mills High School FFA.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Abby Hill?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right. Future, future agenda items for upcoming board meetings, summer, the summer school report, SRO and seclusion and restraint reports, employee handbook updates, an update on the Sale Academy.
Right. We actually shouldn't have any employee handbook updates. However, I will take the blame for this. I should have had also the supplemental increases on here, and I failed to move that over as we had had it a couple of agenda items, and I noticed it this morning that I didn't have it on there. So, the next meeting, we'll put that on there. It's just a matter of re-shing a contract, and then also, then raises finally for the administrative and director team as well.
And then, also, a student presentation about the Spanish and French trip, so.
They actually are planning that coming in September.
Oh.
I, I met with them this past week.
Okay. All right. All right, then.
I'll move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically the district administrator's evaluation.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Abby Hill?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. We are now in closed session.
I do, too.